I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have public comment to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chair. Select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the chair. Do we have any public comment?
Yeah, a quick one. Hi, everyone. Justin Landergan, 38, Larkin Road. Here, just quickly to say the citizens of Larkin Road remain gravely concerned about public safety. We reiterate that Larkin Road should not be reopened to non-emergency through traffic. We remain hopeful you will respond to our public safety concerns and our request for a meeting with public safety and town officials to discuss those concerns. So we look forward to potentially having that meeting and/or bringing this issue to the people at the town meeting in April. Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight? Going once? Going twice? Gone. Okay. Onto board and committee reports. We have report of the chair. I signed PR 2216 for the select board, PR 2216 for Julie O'Brien, and the BW 2217, North of Boston. That was an ad in the paper, correct?
Legal ad, yes.
A legal ad. Grants, gifts, and donations. We have a council and aging donation from David Winters for $25.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council on Aging donation for Marion Allen Fisk, $4.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council on Aging donation for Norma McKay, $20.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Donation from R.D. Connors Corporation for Labor.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion?
Yeah, just what it was this for?
The Bob Connors donated some labor to do some construction work down at the police department.
What did he do and how much was involved?
John, do you want to speak to that?
Do we need these punches in? Are they all set?
We need what?
Do we have to hit the buttons?
I think they're on.
Oh, that's for the...
That's a Triton, isn't it?
For the cable.
Yeah, right. They're wrong, okay.
Good evening.
Hi, John.
So what it was about is Mr. Connors donated, he usually at this time of year, the last couple of weeks in February, he does donations to communities. Newbury has in the past benefited from it quite a few times with the fire department, the highway department, and the police department years ago, the old police department. What he offered was to finish the records archive storage room up in the third floor.
Town Hall, Highway Department.
Oh, yeah, there's so many. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He could go on for quite a while.
Yeah, exactly. But up in the attic, we needed to have archive storage area for all the records. They're up there now, but there's no security, and they have to be in a secure area. And also, an area in the attic of a squad room where there's no squad room for the guys to do work or, you know, to rest between shifts if they're doing quick turnarounds. It saves them from having to commute all the way back up to New Hampshire or whatever. So now they can stay there and pick up their shift eight hours later. So it's a real big convenience, and it's really an asset for the town because now our guys can stay. So it was a really generous...
How much are we talking?
What do you mean?
I mean, what's an estimate? If we wouldn't put this out to bid, what would we bid any of that?
The material or labor is about $20,000 when I had it estimated then.
So he's given...
At least $20,000 worth of it.
At least 20 materials, not counting labor?
No, just labor.
Just labor?
No, labor, yeah.
He didn't pay for the materials?
No.
Who paid for the materials?
That is, I've absorbed that in my budget. I was able to absorb it.
Okay. So there's 20K in the budget? Okay, and the labor's free by...
No, 20K was the labor.
Labor.
Okay, 20K was for the labor.
The materials was part of his line item budget.
Okay. Oh, I thought you just said the materials were 20K.
No, no, no.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Labor.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
And that's an estimate?
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bob. That's like I said, that's a one million dollar sum. Thanks, Mr. Connors.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For that kind of money, I think we should send a note of...
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We should send a note to Mr. Connors thanking him for this kind of donation.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public hearings, none. New business. We have to review and approve a one-day liquor license for B.C.A.C. It's an Allman Brothers tribute concert.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We have to renew a board of registrar appointment for Patricia Keys from April 1st, 2022, to March 31st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Review, the review and approve personnel manual, the personnel manual policy updates. I'm going to pass over this tonight because it had to be posted, and it's on the website. It's been posted. So we'll see this on our next agenda on Tuesday, March 8th. Under all business, Larkin Road, we have to execute an intermunicipal agreement and execute a construction and maintenance easement. And I've asked town council, Lisa Mead here tonight, to explain to the board what these agreements are and how they affect us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tallerman, cost to town council, 30 Green Street in Newport. So there are essentially going to be three documents, two that you have before you this evening. One is an intermunicipal agreement, which has already been executed by the town of Georgetown. And that's an agreement between the town of Newbury and the town of Georgetown, and I'm going to go over that in a minute. Embedded in that agreement is an attachment, is the easement, which actually carries on with the road that allows the town of Georgetown to maintain the utilities. That will be of record. Both of these documents are exhibits in either one of them so that if in 20 years, somebody loses all the documents here at town hall or in Georgetown, they'll actually be of record. So we will be able to find the documents in the agreements in the future. The third agreement that we don't have this evening, but which is also contemplated by these two agreements, is the right of entry, which will allow the contractor to construct the culvert. That will be in your next board meeting, but it wasn't needed until we know that these were approved. So the culvert construction is a right of entry from the town of Newbury to the developer to be able to do the road, and then it goes away. Excuse me, to do the culvert, and then it goes away. And neither the electrical water line that we're going to talk about in a minute can be installed until the culvert is completed. So I'll go through the IMA first, and then we'll go through the easement. So first of all, IMA, municipalities are allowed to enter into agreements and contracts with other municipalities under general law, Chapter 40, Section 4A. We don't have to go out to bid or anything like that. You're just allowed to do it with other governmental bodies. It recognizes that the condominium development is in Georgetown, but the only way to get utilities to it because of the location of the town line is to go through the, to go through the road, Larkin Road, in the town of Newbury. It also says that we're going to, the town of Newbury is going to give Georgetown an easement to allow them to go in and maintain the municipal services after they're installed into the future. It particularly provides standards for construction. That Georgetown has to design the water main in accordance with the Byfield Water District construction standards. The electrical service has to be done in accordance with the industry standards, and that they have to construct the utilities themselves. They have to adhere to Newbury regulations with regards to road openings, and they have to keep Newbury informed of the construction schedule and the process. And then, once they've selected a contractor, or if they're doing it themselves, they have to keep Newbury informed of all of that. It also requires Georgetown to pay for all costs of construction, including the repaving in accordance with Newbury utility and road construction standards. It acknowledges that it's going to be fully ground and a full width repavement from essentially Parish Road all the way down to where the town of Newbury stopped its construction last time they did the road, which I think was last year, right?
Yeah, last year.
It requires Georgetown to carry insurance and list the town of Newbury as one of their insured. It has a release and acknowledgement provision. It's contingent upon the culvert replacement, that is Georgetown municipal services can't be installed until the culvert is fully replaced in accordance with the plans that the town has approved. And it allows Georgetown and requires Georgetown to maintain the installation of the municipal services, namely the water and sewer line. It limits the number of homes that can be built off of those lines to the 10 that are already approved, so they can't somehow build more homes in the area and use those lines. It limits it to 10, which are the ones that are already approved. And it requires them to obtain road opening permits from the town of Newbury every time they have to do maintenance or utility work in the road, just like any other contractor. And the term is for 25 years, which is the standard term that's allowed under Chapter 40, Section 4A. As I said, it refers to the easement, which is an exhibit, and it also has the plans, including the easement area, as well as the location of the utilities in the road. That was reviewed, these have been reviewed by town staff, as well as myself, council for Georgetown, and obviously the staff in Georgetown, and the board of selectmen in Georgetown. So coincident with that is the easement agreement, which actually gives them the legal right to go into the road, right? Just like you would have anybody else use your land, you'd give them an easement or a right of entry or a license to do that. So the easement goes beyond the 25 years, of course, because it's an easement that runs with the land. It very clearly gives them the right to construct and maintain the water line, and then it gives them the right to construct and maintain the electric lines. They are not exclusive. That means the town can go in and do what it needs to do, but they have a right to go in there. They're not exclusive to Georgetown. The town of Newbury needed to do anything in the road. It gives them the right to do that. That doesn't take away any rights. And it also refers to the IMA, and it also has the exhibits, which are the easement exhibits that run with it. And those are the two agreements.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of town council from the board? Jerry?
Yeah. Who drafted these documents? Who drafted these documents?
I drafted the base document, and then they were commented upon by both town council in Georgetown and town council, or council for the developer.
And I note that the Corps of Engineers in their two-page cover letter, they make reference to general conditions beginning on page 19. Has anyone? I don't have 19 pages. I have a two-page cover letter. Did they provide you or the engineers for the town all these other pages?
So the Corps of Engineer document is not a part of the intermunicipal agreement or the easement. That would be part of the construction for the culvert, which is not...
And has this been, have all these pages been shared with the people who need them, is what I'm saying?
So I don't have the Corps of Engineer, I don't know what 19 pages you're referring to. Does he...
Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't know the answer to that because that goes to the construction of the culvert, and that would be the conservation commission and Jim and our peer review engineer. I don't know if Martha has seen that or not, but it would be our peer review engineer and the conservation commission, if necessary, and the DPW director.
But we don't know if they actually see it. I just want, I just want to make sure...
Well, I can make that representation, certainly.
Okay. Well, is anyone here from those committees? Miss DPW, have you seen?
Jerry, hold on a second. So we have Bayside Engineering up here?
Yeah.
Or the Collin-Toney team? Tracy, which one?
Bayside Engineering is our peer review. If you've got a...
Okay, so...
He just didn't give himself his name.
Hi.
My name is Brian Bushett from Bayside Engineering.
Okay, hi. Can you please...
I have not seen the Army Corps package of information in my review. It wasn't provided to me, so I was not aware that there was one. Is it structural in nature, or is it more environmental, which would go to the conservation commission? Question.
It's an environmental.
It's an environmental.
Then it would go to the conservation commission. I would expect.
Okay.
Jerry, where did you see the 19...
Paragraph three.
On the cover letter?
Right. Yeah, please review the enclosed GPS carefully, including the general conditions beginning on page 19.
To be sure that you and whoever does this work understand the requirements.
Right. So do we know that the people who need to know what these additional pages say have seen them?
No.
The letters to Mr. Collin-Toney.
So, Mr. Collin-Toney, can you come up, please, and explain?
Good evening, John Collin-Toney. For the record, it's really very simple. Everything that came from the Army Corps of Engineers, we forwarded, and we understand it all, and it's all been stamped, and it really has nothing to do, per se, with what we're here for tonight, but I respect the question. But yes, we're well aware of it and have it all.
And you say you forwarded it to whom? Someone in Newbury?
Yeah, we forwarded everything from Mass DOT and everything from the Army Corps of Engineers.
So would that have gone to the conservation commission? Because that's not our purview.
We didn't send it directly to the conservation commission.
Who did you send it to? They sent it to me. And I think everyone's gotten it.
I think the general conditions are from the original permit back when they permitted this, which would be part of conservation's original, when they got the original approval.
How many years ago was that?
James, can you come up and explain that a little bit? Thank you, Mr. Collin-Toney.
I believe that the conditions were in place.
Say, say who I...
James, or a DPW director?
Thank you.
I believe those conditions, and I could be wrong because I don't want to speak for conservation, but I believe when this first got permitted, those conditions were laid out, and they're still part of the project, but I don't have them with me, but that was the original, that'd be conservation, you know, a conservation issue, like what those conditions are.
Okay.
So to address, to address the members' concern, I think when we have, when you have the right of entry that you're going to see for the next meeting, we'll reference that, that they have to do the construction in accordance with the permits received, and including but not limited to the DOT review, the Army Corps review, the conservation commission room. So it's very clear that that's in there, and if they don't, then you have a right to pull the right of entry.
Anything else, Jerry?
Yes. The Bayside Engineering, they were the peer reviewers, correct?
Yeah, he's here tonight. Okay.
I was just, it just struck me that they only commented on one thing, which was that the fire truck would be able to safely pass the culvert. I was under the impression peer review looked at all of the design and the issues pertaining to a job. Why is it only limited to just one item?
They did. James, or a DPW, that letter was just drafted. I think there was some concern that the fire truck wouldn't, that culvert wouldn't handle the fire truck, so that letter was drafted just for the mere fact of the fire truck. There's also a letter saying they have worked with them, they agree with the drawings and the, the draft drawings are off to MassDOT to get stamped now. But, you know, you can ask him questions about that. But that letter was just because there was a question about the particular fire truck.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And this may be a very basic question, but these documents talk about the fresh water drinking supply to these 10 homes or condos, stand-alone condos. Are we supplying the water to these homes? Are they going to be hooked up to Byfield or Newbury Water or Georgetown?
Georgetown.
So it's going to be capped, then? Is that correct? There'll be cap, it'll be capped once it goes into the development? It's not going to be hooked up into Byfield?
That's correct. It's all coming from Georgetown. And then there's a limitation on the number of homes that can ever be served off that line from Georgetown.
Okay. And I noticed on page 10, they talk about a Georgetown official responsible for overseeing the construction, as well as providing the contact, emergency contact information. Are we going to have an official from Newbury that is our overseer?
Bayside Engineering is going to continue on working for the town during the construction.
So they're going to be working for us?
Mm-hmm.
Will they also be working for Georgetown?
No.
No, that's our peer review. That's ours.
And I guess I'm concerned about not having the exhibits because there is no, there's no exhibits. It's a blank piece of paper, and it says you're waiting from, no, what I'm looking...
Waiting for developer?
Yeah, waiting for the developer. Yeah, Exhibit A.
No, those were actually, no, those were actually provided, so that, the list of exhibits is a document that's going to go away. The exhibits were actually provided. You should see, in fact, Mike has it in front of him, so you should see, your exhibit should include, the document that was sent over should include these two exhibits, which are the easement exhibit, the utility easement, and the repaving limitations. You can pass those down to the member. And then the easement itself is an exhibit. So those were, yeah, those are actually all done.
Okay. Ask a quick question? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Keep those...
I'll come to your next question.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and on page four, it says both parties agree and understand that the replacement of the culvert is being undertaken by a third party, over which Newbury has no control. Why would the town of Newbury want that language in a contract to definitely say, "We have no control of this person"?
Because it, because if the culvert doesn't get done, Georgetown can't install the water and sewer. So it's Georgetown's responsibility to make sure that the culvert can get done if they want to install water, not water and sewer, excuse me, water and electric. So that's why we have that language in there, that it's not Newbury that's completing the culvert, because the culvert is Newbury, it's on a Newbury Road.
The problem I have is it's saying that we have no control over this contractor.
We don't.
Well, why? Shouldn't we?
We have control over the construction.
I mean, we're going to be standing, let me finish. We've got to, if there is a problem, we're going to be standing around and looking at a problem being made without any control.
So that's the third...
I don't want that.
So that's the third agreement? That's the right of entry, where we have control over Collin-Toney, who's going to put the culvert in, and so we have full control and the right of entry. But in the intermunicipal agreement, if somehow Georgetown can't put the electric and water in because Collin-Toney hasn't finished the culvert, I don't want it to be the town of Newbury's fault that they cannot install the water and the electric.
But I'm more concerned with if something goes awry with that contractor, we have no control over him. That's, that's an issue that...
But you will, under the right of entry, because the contractor, the contractor can't perform anything in the culvert until you have a right of entry.
And, and once he gets that right of entry, if he messes up that culvert, we will stand around with our, our...
No.
You know, with our, sitting on our hands because we said we have no control over.
No, because you're, it's being overseen by your peer review engineer, and that's controlled under the right of entry, not under the intermunicipal agreement, because the contractor is not a party and may not be a party to the intermunicipal agreement.
Right.
And, and that brings me to another area. On page eight, "Nothing in this agreement shall be construed to convey upon any person any remedy as or claim as third-party beneficiaries or otherwise."
Right.
Is that saying that if there's a problem, we, the town of Newbury, as a third-party beneficiary to the contract between the contractor and Georgetown, we have no remedies?
No, it's saying that the contractor can't claim to be a third-party beneficiary to this agreement between Newbury and Georgetown.
Well, it's also saying any person, so wouldn't that cover Newbury?
No, because they're a party to this agreement. They don't have to be a third-party beneficiary. They are a party to the agreement.
Right.
But not, not to, okay. All right. And the easement says our...
What page, Jerry? Nine?
No, it's one of the, of the easement. Our consideration is we're getting a dollar. We're getting a dollar?
That's, that's standard consideration. You're actually getting the culvert, right? I mean, if the town wanted to charge Newbury, Georgetown, for the easement, nobody advised me of that. My understanding was it was part of the whole arrangement of Georgetown doing the construction, Georgetown doing the paving, and the developer doing the thing. So I didn't negotiate a price for the easement.
Well, should you have? I mean, we're not getting any, any benefit of the taxes from these, you know, these $108 million worth of...
So I don't make the business decisions, right? I, I'm the lawyer.
So, but excuse, excuse me, we, we're getting, the town of Newbury is getting a new culvert. That's what the town of Newbury's getting.
Right. But at the end of 25 years, we're going to have to be responsible for it and maintain it.
No, nope, because the easement lives beyond the intermunicipal agreement, and the intermunicipal agreement may be renewed for another 25 years.
All right, but it's limited right now to 25 years.
The intermunicipal agreement is, but not the easement. The easement...
In perpetuity, right.
Correct. And the easement requires Georgetown to maintain.
For, for, in perpetuity? They have to maintain that culvert?
Not the culvert, the easement and the water and electric. Right.
And if the, if the culvert fails, because it failed in 2006, the Mother's Day storm, and they're saying that the level of the rivers, it's all going to rise in the ocean, I guess, who's going to pay for it then?
Well, the town, it's the town's culvert. It's the town's road.
So we would, we would have to pay for it.
Right.
But we would pay for any other bridge or road in our town as well. It's become town, town property.
Okay. All right. And a question on page three.
Of the easement, Jerry?
Yeah.
Yeah. Where it says, "We agree not to construct or to allow to be constructed any structure or other similar improvements on or under the easement that would interfere with the grantee's rights under the easement." How, how big is the easement? Feet wide?
What, what number are you on, on page three?
Number four. Paragraph four.
So the easement, so that means you can't build over the easement, so the easement is...
Fifteen feet.
It's 15 feet wide, and so you're not allowed to build something on top of the easement that would interfere with Georgetown being able to maintain the water and sewer line, the water and electric line.
In the documents, there wasn't a width, there was a length, but there was no width. That's why...
Right, yeah, it's on the plan. The width's on the plan.
Okay. And then I think the final thing I have is on page four... Okay. Um, and then, I think the final thing I have is, on page four, the notice, it's saying that notice, notices shall be deemed delivered on the date that the notice is returned to sender due to the inability of the postal authorities to deliver. How is that possible? I've never seen that in any legal documents in 30 years. If it gets returned to sender because of the postman couldn't deliver it, how are you supposed to, how is the receiver supposed to know that if it's returned to sender because the postman couldn't?
So I think you need to read, I think you need to read the whole, the whole provision, right? So, notice is, uh, delivered, when delivered by hand, or when mailed by registered or certified mail, return receipt requested, or when sent by overnight delivery, or any, um, sent by any other daytime courier. And then it says-
Excuse me, where are you getting that language?
In number 10, on page three, right?
Okay.
And then, um, at the end of that paragraph, it says, "Each party's notice address may change upon 20, 20 days. Notices shall be deemed delivered on the date received, or rejected, or on the date noted that the addressee has refused delivery."
Or on the, yeah.
Right, or on the date that the notice is returned to the sender due to the inability of the postal authority to deliver.
But as I read that, that's saying that, you're saying that you're deemed to have received it, it's deemed to be delivered to you, even when the postman can't make a delivery.
Right, because you have to have made an attempt to do it. And so the idea is that whoever's providing notice must provide the notice, and you know that it's delivered if the postman tries to do it, and it's not there. That's why you have to provide notice of if you're not going to receive it at town hall in either town.
But, but that's not notice, to me, that's not notice at all, because it wasn't, it wasn't received by the person, it was, it was supposed to be received.
Right, but to you, the balance is, the person sending it, so the, so first of all, I think in this particular instance, it's, it's, we're talking about something that's not going to happen, given that it's the towns that are receiving the notice. But that having been said, the person who's sending it has to be, be able to show that they attempted delivery, and so the person receiving it isn't, doesn't keep running away, right?
Right.
So the person sending it has to know there's some definitive process by which they have tried enough. And now if you keep running away, you're still going to get your notice.
But, no, I'm not talking about people running away. I'm talking about when, like, in my situation, if I don't shovel out for the, for the postal man, he won't deliver. So under this, it would be assumed that I knew somebody was sending me a letter because the postman couldn't, couldn't deliver it to my house because of the snow.
Okay, well, the good news is, this goes to two town halls.
Yeah, right. But I, I, I don't know, I just, I've never seen this kind of language. I, I just, I, I don't, I don't care for it. You know, and I, I mean-
So can-
One final question. The last time the folks came, on the 28th of September, they suggested, um, gates, breakaway gates, uh, as an alternative to keep the area safe, and also not having, you know, opening it up to traffic, but allowing emergency vehicles to get through the gates. Why aren't we proposing that?
Because that's traffic mitigation? This is only the intermunicipal agreements that we're discussing tonight. We're not going to discuss traffic mitigation.
Well, wasn't, wasn't that also one of the things that they requested? A traffic study?
The intermunicipal agreement? No. There's no traffic to study.
There will, but there will be, that are the people's points.
So there's not, traffic is not on the agenda tonight. I've already, we're going to have a separate discussion for that.
Are we having a public meeting? Because these, I think we promised these people a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, well, we're going to, there will be, there, it's not on the agenda tonight. I can't talk about traffic mitigation or traffic anything tonight. It will be on a future agenda, but it's not going to be discussed tonight.
Well, it's, it is on the agenda, because the, the Larkin Road is on the agenda.
But traffic mitigation, we're not, I'm not talking about traffic.
Well, you have, if you're talking public safety, I mean, you can't have it both ways.
This is not public safety, this is the intermunicipal agreement.
That talks about the public safety all the time, and the whole purpose of this is the public safety for it. So it's, it's on the agenda, the people, some of the people are here.
It's all about the culvert, if the culvert is safe. It has nothing to do with traffic. Yes, J.R.?
We, once the roads open, and we see the traffic conditions, and we have something to study, we'll have data to respond to. I think that's the, the logical course here.
Well, that would, that would be nice, and I'm glad someone's here, that they can hear that, because we were, we discussed September during a traffic study.
Yeah, so that's, once this traffic, we can get to that point. Okay, so-
And also the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission.
Yeah.
We're going to contact them-
That's going to be, yeah, that'll be on another, another discussion. That'll be another discussion.
So why don't we, why don't we, I, I would move to delay it until we have all of the, all of the cakes before us. You know, so we can discuss the traffic, we can discuss the Merrimack Valley planning, these folks can have a right to maybe see the documents. You know, why are we hiding the ball? This is something that-
There's no ball that's being hidden.
Well, it's playing, it's close to the vessel.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded.
And it's on the-
Not on the agenda, well, what, what is, what is your motion? Can you read it back, Julie?
To delay, what I think she was getting, is delaying the signing of these two documents until we have the discussions about traffic mitigation and the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission traffic report, et cetera.
So, I, I'm going to call a vote for that, but I, I, I need to explain something, okay? Tonight's, the purpose of tonight's meeting was to discuss the intermunicipal agreement between the city of, the town of Georgetown and the town of New, Newbury to get a culvert replaced by Mr. Colin, Colin Tony. It has been, it has gone through town councils of two different communities. The developer has had his council review it. Um, we have had our own peer review, and I haven't even gotten that far yet to have him explain what he's reviewed. There's no traffic to study. I understand there's a concern on the street about traffic, but to delay this project for something that may not happen, I, I, I think it does a disservice to the town of Newbury, and the people on Larkin, Larkin Road.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Everyone in this town knows I'm not exactly pro-development, but, um, with the rapidly rising costs and the instability in the world, I think costing Mr. Colin Tony any more time would put him in serious peril. I mean, costs are so unstable right now. It appears that they've dotted every i and crossed every t.
And if we could get through the, the rest of the meeting?
Well, Madam Chair, I do think it's very disingenuous of the chair to say, "Traffic is not an issue," when these people have come before us time and time again saying that they're concerned, public safety for their children, and their animals, and everything else.
That's right.
You know, and then to say there's no traffic.
Jerry, the chair didn't say that traffic wasn't an issue. She, she tried to say to you exactly what I said, that we need some data to respond to, before we can mitigate the traffic.
We can't study traffic if there's no traffic.
That's, you know, that argument is like saying, um, you know, you can't-
The argument's scientific.
It's not scientific. It's like, it's like saying, we're going to cut off your foot, but don't worry, uh, we'll figure out how well or how poorly you limp after we cut your foot off. The harm has been done.
And I have my, I haven't, I've been asked-
Do you have a motion? I know, I heard you, we have a motion in a second.
Right, but I've asked to speak three times, and you ignored me.
All right, let me take this. Do you want to speak before I take the vote? Go ahead, Mike.
First of all, by going ahead with this too, okay, without doing what Jerry says, we're opening the door, so he's going to develop, and 10 houses, they're going to use the road, and it's not going to give Newbury one cent of taxes, okay? It's going to endanger our people who live on that road, because it is a small road. People have gotten used to it, because this agreement was done in '17, okay, which was a long time ago. And I'm telling you, this is no benefit to Newbury. It only benefits Georgetown, their tax rate, and I'm telling you, we got nothing to win in this.
Okay. The benefit to the town of Newbury is that we get a culvert. Okay, so let me call the vote. So all in favor, can you read the motion again?
To delay the signing of these two documents for Larkin Road until there's traffic mitigation and an MVPC commission report is received.
Okay, so all in favor-
And, and a public hearing.
And a public hearing.
So all in favor to delay the signing of this agreement, and, what was the other, have a public hearing?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to ask, yes, Jeff?
One of the main reasons, at least for me, that this has been very important, Jerry, is because of the requests from public safety, both fire and police, and probably emergency management or whatever else, that they consider that road a better asset open. Have we, have we heard from John, the fire chief?
We're not doing it tonight, Jeff. I'm not talking about it tonight. We're just dealing with the intermunicipal agreement. On next, on March 8th, it's my hope that we'll have another agreement to discuss, and we can have this conversation then.
If I may respond to, Jeff, your argument would be valid. If that closed, that, that road wasn't closed for 16 years, and now suddenly, because-
It wasn't closed for 16 years, Jerry, please don't spread misinformation.
2006, it first failed. It first failed in the father-
James, can you tell us when the road was closed?
Can you tell me the exact date?
Six years ago. Six years ago.
I have it, but just not with me. I didn't realize.
That's okay. Six, six years ago.
And this is a picture of that culvert and that road from 2006, and it's completely flooded, and it, and it, it's failed twice. So your argument would be great if we didn't have dead-end streets in Newbury, and, and they did something when it first failed.
Almost every bridge in town overtopped in 2006. I was here.
I was too. I was-
All right, so, so I'm going to ask, who's, by the way, do you know who Daryl and-
It's all on our team.
These are all your team members? Okay. I'm going to ask Bayside Engineering, are you still there, Bayside?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Can you please explain to the board a summary of your review? Do you have that in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me. Essentially, I reviewed the initial plans back in September, that were provided. Um, I had a, a fair-sized list of my concerns, and I sent those along through, through, uh, Jim. And, uh, subsequently, uh, there was revisions, um, essentially, it, it, sorry, I'm going to mark. There were safety concerns, there were logistics concerns, uh, which have since been addressed in the plans. Uh, the plans are now suitable for a chapter 85 of the G with the state, which they have been, I believe, sent to the state, uh, to get their, uh, to get it signed off. The state also reviewed it back in September, early October, I can bet you. And so they had done a cursory review, uh, and they gave their, uh, points that they wanted to have addressed as well. So I, I looked at those, I looked at, at, at what they've set up, what they've suggested since. And they, we, we had a little meeting over the phone, and we determined, uh, how best to proceed to make it move forward. And as it is right now, uh, they've been, they've been very cooperative, so they made a lot of concessions, which, after my explaining what, what my issues were with things, they, uh, they were able to understand what I was trying to get at. So what we're trying now is going to be a, um, a safe culvert. It's going to have proper bridge rails on it, to prevent vehicles from falling in the water. Um, it's going to have proper erosion control, proper guardrails. The structure itself is, is strong enough to hold, um, the, the largest fire truck that the fire chief has sent over, the schematic fortune. I made a, uh, a, a liable comparison for that.
How about school buses?
School buses weigh less than the design loading, just like fire trucks weigh less than the design loading. So it's going to be fine. You have dump trucks, you can have, uh, garbage trucks. The design loading is, it's not a real truck, it's heavier than real trucks. But that's an ASHDO-defined vehicle. That's, that's the designed truck per ASHDO, which is the, uh, American Association of State Highway Traffic, State Highway- It's the code, the weak code, by the way, when we design bridges and culverts.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional in, information you'd like to share with the board?
Nothing's coming to mind right now, uh, but if you have more questions, I'll field them as best as I can.
Thank you. Okay, Jerry has a question.
Uh, of the engineer, how, what is the maximum load that the culvert will safely allow a truck to pass over?
It has been designed for an HL, actually, it's been designed for an H S 20. Uh, so essentially, the individual axle that will be on this, because the way the truck is actually designed, would be, uh, 32,000 pounds. Um, that's what it's designed for. It has a lower level for, uh, once-in-awhile usage, like a fire truck, or something like that, which it didn't need by, by, by comparison to be compared to that. But it can take much higher load than that. It's about 25% more load than that it can take. So the individual axle that it was designed for is 32,000 pounds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone else on the board have a question as an engineer?
I just want to clarify, that's because only one axle of the vehicle's on the culvert at a time. You know, when you get into large trucks like that, that's why they're rated.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you, J.R. Mike, do you have any questions? Jeff? Okay, so, seeing no questions, anybody else have any further questions of town council? So I'll entertain a motion.
I move to execute and sign the intermunicipal agreement, and execute and sign the construction and maintenance easement.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just want to say that I'm going to be very sensitive to traffic issues. This isn't done for me. I believe our roads are a network, and it's important, especially for public safety reasons, that this road be open. But I'm also, you know, this needs to work for everybody, and I'll be paying attention. And we'll definitely mitigate as we get some data to work on.
I agree. Um, any other discussion?
To me, it was, like I said before, if there was an accident and the road needed to be used for public safety, when public safety asks me of something, I'm going to agree with public safety and fire.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
And, I just need a majority, right? Okay.
You don't need a four-fifths majority, Paul.
Thank you.
Can you show me that one sometime?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Uh, Mr. Colin Tony, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, can, look forward to continuing working with Bayside. Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight.
See you.
Take care.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Lisa.
Um, so next we have the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, we have a couple of ARPA requests this evening. One is for the library. They are requesting an appropriation of $10,426 for envisionware self-checkout kiosk. They felt that, um, there would be a significant benefit to, um, to the residents to be able to borrow materials without any close person- borrow materials without any close person-to-person contact and, so they, they're hoping that you would see fit to approve this. The other request this evening is for the Fire Chief to replace a 2012 Ford Expedition. It is now experiencing electrical problems and there's rust on it as well. This functions as the town's, the Fire Department's command vehicle in all events, so that's why the additional expenses, it has all the firefighting gear, the computer, SCBA equipment, I'm sorry?
What was it?
$55,000.
And these have gone through capital planning?
These have gone through capital planning. The, I believe, oh, the chief left. It went through our, our process in.
The rotation.
Annuary, I want to say, but they've all been, they've all gone through capital planning. They've also gotten the approval, so we're, we're working with a consultant, CPA firm that specializes in all ARPA requests, to make sure that they all qualify. So, it's been through their review as well.
Right. Jerry?
Ms. Blais, when you say they qualify, are you talking about they qualify under the ARPA?
Under the ARPA, their ARPA requests, yes, under the revenue laws.
Yep. So, we need votes on those.
Seems like a good use.
Can we hang up that? Do we need that going anymore? Because Mike's here now. He's not zooming in. Can we shut that zoom down?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to approve library contactless device.
Second.
Is it software or is that the right word?
It's a self-checkout kiosk.
Kiosk. My discussion?
Yeah.
Well, I noticed in the newspaper, the little town of Merrimack, they apparently had a meeting of their department heads and they came up with a list of priorities and things like that. I guess, why aren't we doing that? Why aren't we, or are you doing that? Are you meeting with the department heads? I guess my concern is, the, the last meeting we had, we spent $562,375, which is, well, it's a good chunk.
Sure.
I guess my concern is, if we don't collectively figure out how we're going to use this money, we're gonna use it all up and then we're gonna have a request, you know, two weeks later and it's like, whoa, we went through all the 2.1 million. So, what, is that being done?
I mean, we, what we're looking at is we're, we're following our financial policies, we're not funding anything that's an operational expenditure. We're using, we're looking to our capital plan, those items that have been identified as necessary for funding. Anyone is welcome to apply for it. The applications are available, the department managers have them. We've been talking about it since, pretty much since the initial grant award was accepted, so there's an awareness among the, among the employees and these are the ones that have been brought forward today.
One thing to keep in mind is, like, the kiosk is optional, but like the chief's car, that's something that the town would have to come to grips with replacing anyway.
So, all of these items have gone through capital planning. Have you seen the capital planning report yet? Have you?
No.
Okay, so maybe we can get that to you, but.
We'll have an updated one the end of March.
Okay, good. So, we're gonna get an updated one, but everything that the town, every capital.
Is it over 10 grand, 10 grand?
What's a capital asset?
Ten, over 10 grand.
Anything over 10 grand.
Used for life for more than five years.
Is on a list and it's on a rotate for every department, for the DPW, for the, the police, the fire, all of it. It all, it rotates out, every department.
Scheduled.
Scheduled, so that we don't, and it's planned financially. Years ago, Newbury didn't do that. That's why we're kind of playing catch-up now with our, with our capital assets.
The famous turning point was losing the axle on one of the old Sandon trucks and we all knew it was time to.
To replace it.
Yeah.
So, we, we, we don't, we look forward, we don't look, we're not looking backwards on this. We, we plan.
And, and, yeah, I, I'm happy to hear you say you plan, because again, I don't want to go through this money and then have some kind of emergency, which if we knew about it, talked about it, we would not have used the money for.
Right.
A library.
And we also, we also earmarked, I believe it was, how much was the, the Department of Public Health, what did they earmark?
Over 200,000.
Yeah, last, last meeting, we earmarked four specifically for COVID expenses for the Department of Public Health.
Yep. And you're right. I mean, we can't plan for the emergency issues. Those would likely be funded through the extraordinary and unforeseen expense, the reserve fund, but these, these expenses would otherwise be appearing, you know, for town, on town meeting to use taxpayer funds, but this is an opportunity for us to shift the costs to the grant, as long as they meet the requirements, which they have.
There certainly can be, Jerry, something, honestly, I've been here a while now, that can be unforeseen, but boy, there was nothing in place years ago when I first started. I mean, the Fire Department had no scheduled maintenance, no scheduled replacements. I mean, now, all the departments have.
Maybe it was a volunteer paid department.
Yeah, but it was.
But they didn't have what they needed.
They didn't have what they needed.
And I mean, then the ambulances were, would break down and so, I mean, and it's Tracy and everyone else working together in capital planning that have put all this planning and scheduling in place.
We didn't have a capital plan till.
None of that was in place, you know, 10 years ago.
2012, I don't think, is when we put together our first capital plan.
Yeah, 10 years ago, it got started.
Twenty, yeah, yeah, 10 years ago. Wow, we've come a long way in 10, in 10 years.
Yep, yep.
We really have.
That's why people aren't as concerned, you know, we could miss something, but a lot of the big ones, we've certainly put in the, in the, in the, in the queue.
So, I have a motion, $10,426 for ARPA funding for the library.
Second.
That's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I have, can I have a motion for the fire truck?
Motion to approve a replacement vehicle for the Fire Chief for $55,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The governor's budget, we've been notified that there were two earmarks placed for Newbury. One was for $100,000 for the Plum Island improvement, the design and engineering for the emergency egress routes. The second was for $68,000 for the purchase of a new senior van, you know, remains to be seen if that will.
How much was that again?
$68,000.
$68,000.
That won't cover the full cost, but it will certainly defray a large chunk of it.
And that still has to make it through the House and then?
Right, right. Stormwater, I. I'm sorry?
So, the 100,000, that's for the emergency road, right?
Right.
I still, I'm still amazed, is Newbury on board with this 100%?
It's in Newbury.
I know, but you think, but it's gonna be used by Newbury more than anyone, because everyone on that end of the alley is from Newbury, okay? So, I'm just saying, I said, I said it since day one, why isn't Newbury at this table, okay, discussing, when this was discussed?
Mike, that's not on the agenda.
It is, no, it's on the agenda, we're talking about, it's, you guys.
Talking about a grant.
Right, but I want to know, basically, it's a grant for an access road that's gonna help Newbury more than Newbury and Newbury's not at the table ever and nobody will answer me why.
Because it's not in.
Yeah, because the road.
But it's, it's gonna help.
I can't imagine they'd be opposed to it. I could certainly reach out to the mayor, the new mayor and ask him. The old mayor was in support of it, but I can ask the new mayor.
The old mayor, four city councils didn't even know about it. They had no clue.
They're not required to vote on anything, it's not in.
But, but Mike, it's not in Newbury.
Just like Lockin Road.
It's not, it's in Georgetown.
We've been spinning on wheels for months over.
Right, exactly. It's like, you're picking shoes, you're picking shoes, bro. Go ahead.
Anyway. Newbury has no control over what Newbury does, but anyways, go ahead, Tracy.
So, Stormwater, regret to inform you that John O'Connell has notified us that, or notified me that he's gonna be stepping down as the chairman of the Stormwater Management Team.
Oh, what a loss that's gonna be.
That is a tremendous loss for us. He has spearheaded that for as long as I've been here and I'm sure for many years before that. Always got us well ahead of the curve in respect to, you know, meeting all of our, our deadlines and making sure we were, we, we did the education, the outreach, did everything we needed to do, but he is going to stay involved, he just doesn't want the responsibility of being the chair. So, James Saret, our DPW director, is gonna take over the lead and we're gonna continue working with Geosyntec, I believe their name was there.
Renee.
Renee at Geosyntec. She's gonna provide us some guidance and steering currents as we transition the new chair. So, like I said, John will stay engaged, so we'll definitely, you know, he's not gonna leave us.
That historical knowledge won't go away.
No.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Can we make a motion that we send John? He's, he's done so much for this town. I would like a letter sent from the Board of Selectmen in acknowledgement.
Selectmen.
Second.
Looking for the select board, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I slipped. Don't hold the old answer. Select board, okay, for all he's done for the town, because he has, he has done an amazing amount, okay?
And you second that, Jeff?
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Martha or Tracy, who was it that worked with John for so long as part of the storm?
Yvonne.
Yvonne, Buzzwell. The two of those guys, they put down a lot of, a lot of pavement, a lot of tire, a lot of work. Not that they put down tire, they walked a lot.
And also wanted to mention to you relative to the library, on February 25th, the Friday evening of the storm, when the DPW personnel were over shoveling, they noticed a glycol smell, went in to investigate and we did have a leak. It looked like somehow, is it a ball, the ball valve was open slightly and the cap, the safety cap that covered it had corroded. So, sometime between when the staff left on Thursday night and Friday night when they got there, it had let go. So, we had Servpro in there, they cleaned it all up on Saturday, the, and then we're going to have the adjuster from Maya, our insurance company, will be out there to see, you know, how extensive the damage is. I think there are some issues with the drywall, so there may be a period of renovation where we have to close.
What was the equipment that broke down?
The heat system.
The heating system.
The liquid inside, you know, like antifreeze, so it doesn't freeze in.
That's what I was trying to figure out, so it's the hot water antifreeze, yep.
So, is there any, will it be covered by insurance?
Yeah. And Chief Janverne has also reported that the, we were awarded the Senior Safer Grant. It was a little over $2,800 and it's aimed at educating seniors on fire prevention, general home safety, and how to be better prepared in the event of an actual fire. I think, was that the one you had brought to our attention, Mr. DeBeau? Yeah, so, someone, some surrounding community had been awarded it, so the chief moved forward with it and we were successful, so that's it.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so, under correspondence, we have a letter from Raleigh regarding the Triton Regional School Budget.
Can we discuss that?
What do you want to discuss?
In the letter, so, I can't read the letter, do you think the letter, since the public doesn't know, could you read the letter?
Sure. It's not to us, we were copied on this, so this, I want to make it clear that this is not directed to us, it's directed to the Triton Regional School District.
It was CC'd to us.
Yeah, we were copied on it, because we were members of the Triton Regional School District, but it's regarding the fiscal year 23 Triton Regional School District Budget. It's to the chairperson, Liptowski. As you develop the fiscal year 23 Triton Budget, I respectfully ask the Triton Regional School Committee and school administration to work within the parameters of realistic and available funds in the three towns that make up the Triton Regional School District. The Board of Selectmen supports an increase in Raleigh's assessment of no more than $402,000 in fiscal year 23. This amount reflects half of the town's anticipated new property tax revenue and is an estimate and subject to change. On behalf of the Raleigh Board of Selectmen, I respectfully ask the Triton School Committee and school administration to approach the next budget season with careful consideration to not just the district's expenses, but also taking into consideration available revenues. I look forward to working with you and the superintendent of budget on developing and setting a fair and reasonable school operating budget in fiscal year 23. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Cliff Pierce, Chairman of the Raleigh Select Board, of Board of Selectmen.
The reason I brought it up, I did go to the last DCC meeting and got the packet. It looks like Raleigh's substantially short of meeting, they're gonna be substantially over 400 and 9, 2,000. So, basically.
Would you say that? What? Because I was there too.
I said, I think they're gonna be $499,000. I think it's, they're gonna be $97,000 short and it looks like they're putting a stick in the sand. And I'm just saying, it's like, if they're saying their budget's only going up 2.5%, they're only gonna go up that.
Half of that.
Triton's going up 4-point-something. And the reason, I said, I think the public's had the right to know, because I'm not sure if those meetings, how well they're attended.
Well, the school committee has their public meetings and that's where they present their budget. I think this was the high-water mark budget, wasn't it, the first budget that they gave out?
But still, I mean, it's like, they're not looking, when I've talked to Salisbury, okay, just talking to his friends, they're saying the same thing.
We'll have to see where.
Budget ain't gonna be, it's not gonna, put it this way, we're putting money away for rainy day funds, right? Because I'm telling you, this is gonna be a rainy day.
Well, I have always said that the Commonwealth has stepped away from its obligation.
Totally agree. It's not just this, it's not just education, it's pensions, it's everything.
I know, and it's, it's, it's the state.
It's the, it's the exercise that's gonna, I mean, one of the big reasons Raleigh's, I mean, the price went up so high, no, during the pandemic, teachers went and took courses. So, you, if you took a bunch of courses and got a master's, you got a $30,000 raise and there's nothing in the town. So, their budget went up $468,000, I think it was, Jeff? I think just in budget, just in wage increases.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's nothing we can do about it, because it's in their contract.
Right.
But there's the only, I mean, that's something we gotta look, it's like, the, the school committee's gotta look at, because we can't keep giving more than half our budget to the town, we got a town to run.
Okay. We also got correspondence from the Mass Division of Marine Fisheries about shellfish closures and we got a letter from Xfinity.
Big letter.
That, I'll read. Dear Chairman, members of the board, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 6, 166A, Section 10, Comcast is pleased to provide a copy of its Form 500 for year-end 2021. Form 500 contains information on customers' video service related to issues in your community and how Comcast responded, including the time taken to resolve these complaints. For the Form 500, the Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications defines complaints as followed. Any written or verbal contact with the cable operator in connection with subscription in which a person expresses dissatisfaction with an act, omission, product, or service that is, one, within the operator's control, and, two, requires a corrective measure on the part of the operator. Comcast also has provided a copy of the enclosed Form 500 to the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. Please do not contact me to Patrick Shearns, S-H-E-A-R-N-S, S-H-E-A-R-N-S, at Comcast.com should you have any questions. So, I looked through this and I found it interesting that Newbury had a very low number of complaints. If anybody wants to see this, can reach out to Julie and she can send that to you.
A lot of the treatment that the DPW's done the last few years helps keep the complaints down, keeps us out of power outages.
Yeah.
Julie, if anyone wants a copy, you can have my copy too.
Okay. Recycle.
Yep.
They, we also got a letter from, our annual notice from Xfinity, in accordance with Massachusetts Cable Regulations 207 CMR 10.012 and 10.026, encloses a copy of Comcast's policies and procedures, sample subscriber bill, work order and rate and channel lineup information for our community. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. So, they have to provide that to us annually. And do we have any meeting updates?
We've already talked about the DCC meeting. I did go to the municipal law meeting on, on the 31st, was a web seminar, webinar, very, really well done. If you had the time, watch it, if you didn't watch it. And the only other thing was, I had some more stuff from Triton, but we'll, Triton will come up later at town meeting, I'm sure.
It sure will.
I'm sure, well, yeah, it will. I think I said, it's like, it's nothing else, like, we gotta say.
We have a review of meeting minutes to approve draft minutes of February 8th, 2022.
Motion approved. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have warrants.
Motion to sign warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.